We're gonna call this meeting order. I'm gonna ask Pastor Ola, from the Cornerstone Baptist Church, will you come up please to give us our prayer and then we be followed by a prayer by Ms. Patricia Ly.
Sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before your throne of grace today in total humility for who you are, for what you've done, for what you can do, and for what you will do. And we come before your presence today, God, in thankfulness. We thank you, God, for the gift of salvation. We thank you for your mighty and your awesome provision. We thank you for this city. We thank you for this mayor, for these council members. And God, we come to you this morning in repentance, Father, for repentance for who we are. And we pray that you would forgive us where we fail you. And we thank you that if we ask for your forgiveness, that you do forgive us and cleanse us from all in righteousness. And I lift up this day to you today, and I lift up this meeting, and I pray, Father, that you would just place your hands on this mayor, on these council members. God, I pray that you would offer them leadership, guidance, and direction, and give them your wisdom to make decisions that affect this city and all the citizens of it. And God, I just pray that what this mayor and this council wants for this city is in line with what you want for this city. God, we just thank you for your love and for your grace and your mercy. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All face the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. City Clerk, will you call the row?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Sutter. Councilor Bruce. Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Muhammad.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We have nine out of ten that's present, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. During our bid openings and during pre-council, we discussed our insurance, and we had only one bidder that bided on the insurance with for Cigna. And I'm gonna ask you at this time if you don't have any questions for Mr. Glass, who's in the audience. Will you accept that bid with a motion in second?
Second.
All three by?
Aye.
opposed? All right, well, we're going back with Cigna. Can I get the motion? Were there any corrections to the minutes, please?
Motion for previous minutes.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Those minutes are approved. We're gonna go down to all business. Mr. Attorney, would you read the first ordinance?
This is an ordinance to amend section five of ordinance number 1588, establishing the mosquito control, providing funding, and for other purposes.
All right, they'll be back on this final reading in two weeks. Next one.
Second reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 2504 and section thirty-four dash thirty of the West Memphis Municipal Code to set garbage collection fees and for other purposes.
Once again, that will be on this third reading in two weeks.
This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend section ten of ordinance number 2472 to increase fees and add trades, businesses, professions, vocations, and/or callings for which a privileged license shall be payable and for other purposes.
That will be read again. The only third reading in two weeks. Ms. Muhammad, will you do me the pleasure, R1, O1, and O2?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on R1, O1, and O2, and read my title only.
Thank you, the second. All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? City Attorney?
R1 is a resolution authorizing and approving execution of an equipment-lease-purchase agreement with Cadence Equipment Finance, a division of Cadence Bank.
We know that's a very loaded for public works, so we go into a resolution of what we need to do. Were there any other discussion about that?
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Ms. Clerk, will you give the resolution the number?
Resolution number twenty-two ninety, twenty-two ninety.
That number is twenty-two ninety. That number is two-two-nine-one. O1?
O1 is an ordinance to amend chapter two, article six, procurement of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding the competitive bidding requirements for purchases made by the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in second to suspend the rules and places on this second reading?
So moved.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance to amend chapter two, article six, procurement of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding the competitive bidding requirements for purchases made by the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Now, for the suspended rules, place on the third reading.
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Third reading of an ordinance to amend chapter two, article six, procurement of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding the competitive bidding requirements for purchases made by the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion in the second to approve?
Motion.
Well, I'll give you just a little discussion. What it is, we have stopped right now, normally at twenty thousand dollars for bidding, but the state a couple of years ago signed it thirty-five, and really, we just coming in compliance on what the state is doing. So that's the reason why we asked for this change.
That's thirty-five thousand now.
Thirty-five thousand. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, plus, under your administration, you've added additional requirements to the purchasing of the city where it's probably more restrictive than most, where you have to get the quotes and do everything. So I know, as a council member, appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you. Any other discussion? All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It's a pass. Will you give that ordinance the number, please?
Ordinance number twenty-six fifty, twenty-six fifty.
That number is twenty-six fifty? O2?
O2 is an ordinance adopting the city of West Memphis fixed asset policies and procedures and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to suspend the rules and places on this third reading. I mean, second reading, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? City Attorney?
This is an ordinance adopting the city of West Memphis fixed asset policies and procedures and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to suspend the rules and places on this third reading? All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It passes.
This is an ordinance adopting the city of West Memphis fixed asset policies and procedures and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Can you just give us a little explanation of what this ordinance is about, sir?
Uh, yes. So we have a fixed asset process, but it's not in writing. So, um, we've had to do a policy for our electronic, uh, wire funds, and this is also one of the things we should have already had a policy for. So we are just now adopting a formal policy. This is, this is stuff we already do. Um, but we just had to have it in a policy form.
Yeah, there's a statute that says we shall have this policy, and we actually haven't had it. So this is Tori taking care of something that probably should have been done in the past.
Yeah, other than purposes as well, so.
Thank you so very much.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Will you give that ordinance the number, please?
Ordinance number twenty-six fifty-one, twenty-six fifty-one.
That number is twenty-six fifty-one. Um, permission request. I'm asking for permission to demolition of the property located at twenty-eight oh-six East Grove. Which was burned out, and a far, the farther apartment had already condemned, but the last trailer.
So moved.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? All right, that's approved. Also, I ask for a motion in second to add the charity days to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? All right, I was told that Councilman Murray wanted to donate five hundred dollars to Maddox.
The elementary after school.
Okay, after school, okay. That's Maddox After School Program. Also, Councilman Willis wanted to donate his balance to the Creney County Boys and Girls Club.
His balance is seven fifty-eight seventy-seven.
Seven fifty-eight. And Councilman Katz is gonna donate his balance to Creative Strategies.
Yes, sir.
Balance?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. It's one thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Tori, do you have my balance available? I know I haven't donated in a while. Sorry.
Hello? Uh, two thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-two cent.
Ms. Tori, why are you looking?
Oh, Ms. Muhammad, did you want to donate some?
No, I, I, I just wanted my balance off. Know how to divvy it up.
Okay.
Members present, may I?
Just, Councilwoman Hutchinson?
I don't want my balance. I just want to donate.
Okay. Um, seven fifty-eight seventy-seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Hutchinson?
If, if I may, I would like to donate two hundred and fifty to First United Methodist Church on Missouri.
Okay. Councilwoman Crum, did you wanna donate?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was trying to get my churches right. And two hundred and fifty to the River Church.
Two hundred and fifty to the River?
River Church, yes, sir. Two fifty to First United and two fifty to River Church.
Okay.
You got it. Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
One, one thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy cent.
Councilwoman Monday, did you want to donate?
We'll talk to the councils first.
Okay, okay. Did anyone else, Ms. Harris?
One thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cent.
All right, so to be clear, Councilman Murray has donated five hundred to the Maddox After School Program. Councilman Willis is giving his balance, which is seven fifty-eight seventy-seven, to the Creney County Boys and Girls Club. Councilman Katz is giving his balance to Creative Strategy, which is a thousand eight seventy-seven?
Yes.
Eight seventy-seven. Councilwoman Hutchinson is giving two fifty to First United Methodist and two fifty to the River Church on Jackson. Um, that was everyone, right?
Yes, sir. First United Methodist, yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking. I'm sorry.
I didn't overlook any one, right? Did I get a motion? I mean, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
Hold on, did I get a mo-? Give me a motion second to approve.
So moved. Second.
Now, all the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It's all approved. All right. Committee reports, parks?
Yes, sir. I'm so very, very excited to report that we had our first Parks and Recreation Meeting on Tuesday, October thirty-first, at twelve noon. And I do have a brief synopsis ready here. Uh, the members present was our new director, Mr. Russell Jones, Ms. Carolyn Anthony, Mr. Gary Cordell, Mr. Darren McCollum, Ms. Jamie Patterson, Mr. Hudson Hallen, Mr. Ted Ray, Mr. Anthony Hampton, and your liaison, Mrs. Lorraine Muhammad. Uh, everything is just so beautiful. They are called the Green Dream Team, and I call them the Extremely Great Team because they were discussing so many wonderful things moving forward with our Parks and Recreation Department. I'm very, very excited because one of the first things that was mentioned to me was the Dr. Martin Luther King Park, which is very dear, near and dear to our hearts. One of the first things they want to do is put signage there, so when people are traveling on the service road, they can see that that is actually a park, and talking about doing other things for that park as well. Uh, bullet number one, introduction of staff and commissioners, as well as our liaison, Mrs. Lorraine Muhammad. Each introduction from each member was extremely impressive. I mean, they just gave a well-rounded, um, synopsis of who they are and what their plans are, and they are all very, very excited about what they're doing. The commission appointed Mr. Darren McCollum as chairman and Ms. Jamie Patterson as secretary. We also discussed, established our monthly meeting dates and times, and that's gonna be the first Tuesday of each month at noon. So we should be having another meeting, uh, this coming Tuesday, official meeting. Another discussion was park and staff expectation. So many things they're looking at doing with the parks. The staff has driven all over to each park analyzing, seeing what can possibly be done to improve each one of our parks here in the city of West Memphis. And one of the things they were discussing was we want to improve our parks because it's staple for our city, for our children to have somewhere to play, so they won't have to go out of town or go out of state or anywhere else. Want to have so many great things in our parks that our children can enjoy, such as water slides, uh, other things for our young, small children. Just have something exciting to kind of keep them here, something that we can all be proud of. Another thing we discussed was the individual parks portfolios. Uh, looking at each park, seeing exactly what needs to be done, coming to the city, to the, uh, Mr. Katz and the Business Committee, to see what monies we may need to generate, if any, to get the things we need to go in our parks. Our park accomplishments, and that's just to, uh, enact all of the things that we've been discussing, all of the things that we want done. We want to accomplish everything that we are setting out to do. Bullet one, bullet two, bullet three. We want to just go down the line to make sure we are accomplishing those things as we go along. Not trying to do everything at one time, but just going a little bit by a little bit. Um, another thing that the commissioner did, approval of parks and revised the rental agreement. I think the new rental rate is gonna be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. It was voted on for rentals. A hundred dollar deposit, and if you leave the park cleaned after you've used it, then that one hundred dollar deposit will be refunded to you. The general consensus of all the members, including liaison, was that we're looking forward to moving the city forward. Thank you, Mayor McClendon, for choosing such a good team to lead our park. That is my report.
Um, hearing her, relevant fees in the council, did I get a motion in second from the council to approve that, uh?
One twenty-five.
Yeah, one twenty-five?
So moved.
Where was it amended from? I don't recall.
Pardon me?
The amendment, it went from?
One hundred to one twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It's approved. Was there one?
It was not. It was seventy-five dollars? Okay, that was not discussed. So it went from one, it went from seventy-five dollars to one twenty-five. Thank you so very much for that correction.
Okay.
And I told them, Ms. Patricia, as far as the codes and ordinances, whatever it is, because most of them are new to the city and they don't know, I told them to please contact you because you have everything on record.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is my report.
Thank you. Uh, was there any other committee here met so far? Hearing none, okay. I hear no appointments. I hear no presentations. Was there any other announcements besides the one? Someone about to announce?
I would like to ask about the roofing program. A lot of people have been, well, not a lot, but some people have been asking me when the roofs are going to be repaired, that they applied for back in the summer. Could you give us a little bit of update?
Sure. We just had this conversation just in, uh, Ms. Felix off. Ms. Felix, will you come forward and give us an update on that?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, the roofing program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, CDBG. Of course, that fiscal year just started in July, so we, we've got time to complete our roofs for twenty-three. We had a hundred and two applicants. Um, we've selected about sixty homes that were actually eligible. So we are having to do assessments of those roofs to narrow it down even further because, of course, we cannot possibly do that many roofs. So that's where we are. Uh, the inspectors will be going out, looking at each roof, and that means getting on top of them if they have to because we want to make sure that we choose ones that will benefit and create longevity for that structure. So we're in the process. We've had a lot going on between demolitions and getting code enforcement. Uh, it's just been busy. So they will be completing those assessments for the twenty-twenty-three year for CDBG. We are on top of that.
Thank you. First of all, I got a few announcements. Uh, our inclusion park, that's something that's going in Hicks Park, and that park is going to go to benefit our children with autism, mental and physical disabilities, and, um, learning deficiencies, blindness, sensory. Uh, Raymond Whiteside done an excellent job of going to present to the state last week, and I just want to commend him on the job he done with the state, and we, right now, it's in the hands of our governor, which I did have the opportunity to see her yesterday. Yesterday, we was in Little Rock. Uh, we feel really good about this grant application, which is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant. We, I think all of the board commissioners was on board with the city of West Memphis getting it. It have not yet been made official, so I'm still knocking on wood, but I'm just praying and hoping that this definitely go good because it's gonna be something different for our city. The closest city to West Memphis that has an inclusion park would be Jonesboro. So being able to help those kids with special needs, it's definitely gonna be great for our city. November the eleventh, we'll be having our veterans parade. Uh, it's, uh, Mr. James, no, I don't see James. How you doing? Um, we'll be having our veterans parade. Councilman Crum, do you know the times on that veteran parade?
I, I. Ms. Emily Scarborough, they have us, uh?
Yes, uh, Veterans Parade is Saturday, November eleventh. It starts at the West Memphis Christian Parking Lot. Lineup begins at ten, uh, nine. Uh, the parade hits the street at ten and ends at the Veterans', um, site on South Avalon at, for the eleven-eleven ceremony.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Also, um, I'm happy to announce that, uh, next week, we'll be doing another ribbon cutting, well, not ribbon cutting, the groundbreaking for our new animal shelter that we've been there to partner with Southland Casino, to be ready to produce a new animal shelter, something that's much needed. I think Ms. Carrie Focello has done a great job, her and her staff, and they're gonna address somebody, the animal issues that we may have in our city as well, to give a hand, and I guess some county?
Yeah.
If we're able to, but definitely, they need a new facility. If you all have went out there and seen the trailers at the end, it, it's time for something new. And Ly has done a great job of doing a new design for the, uh, the center. Southland is, like I said, it's paying for this, so definitely, we, the city will not be spending any money over the, the completion of this. But definitely, the, uh, Southland, Southland Casino is doing a great job with helping us and partnering with us to make this happen. It's gonna be named the Curlin and Ness Seacrest Animal Control Center. So let me say that the Ness and Curlin Seacrest Animal Control Facility. So definitely, it's gonna be a great plus for us, and it's a building that much needed for the city that definitely, we ain't gotta pay for it right, right to it. So.
Or is it located near McClendon?
It's gonna be at Southland. You know where the killing's at in the back part of it, but they are giving us all their land, but not all their land. It's like the first three trailers, not, the first three homes back there, dog houses that they had, where they were, some of them houses were rather the real houses that people live in. But right there is where they're gonna, them, them all cover buildings, and I know this new facility is gonna be around forty-five hundred square feet. So it's gonna be great. Much needed and appreciated. Thank you so much. Uh, I just want to let the council know what the next budget mean, when you said it. It'll be next week. I'll get with Ms. Perry, and we'll announce it and get an email out or a text message to everyone.
So we're gonna do our regular scheduled budget meeting next week, and then possibly the next week, we'll be going over the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Okay. The last thing I have on my announcements is that, um, you know, sometimes this is always tough for me when I speak about it, but, you know, we, we had another unfortunate murder the other night at Woods and Broadway, which was at a gas station. And even though that murder is down here, we have had five murders, it's still five murders too much for our city. And it's very unfortunate when we see the continuing cycle of young men. And I'm gonna say, and I'm sorry, y'all may hold this against me, but I'm gonna speak the truth. When you start seeing young black men taking a life for young black men for no reason, you know. They don't understand how they hurt families, but they don't understand how they hurt the city, and how that comes back on the city, how some of us blame, how policemen, but everyone is blaming themselves to people who are doing their acts. And I just want you to understand that I'm, I'm praying for our young men, but sometimes it take tough love. It's gonna take that to get our young men on the right track and learn to value life. I know some people saying, well, black lives matter. I wanna see black lives have value. I want people to start to value life, and people stop using, like, it was to an eighteen and nineteen-year-old, their life is pretty much gone. One, one guy is gone. The other nineteen-year-old, his life pretty much is gone behind there. And it, it just take the time. I mean, I'm, I'm asking everyone to be vocal. We are community. We are not hiding anything. You know, I know some people say they don't wanna talk, but actually, we have the, uh, the suspect who done it. But I just want our young men to start making better decisions. Uh, you ask parents to do better, but sometimes it's out of parents' hands. It can always be that responsibility. But young people just gotta start making better decisions. That taking a gun and taking someone's life is not acceptable in this community. I don't, I don't like it. I don't, I didn't know the young man, but I'm sure I know their families. And we just gotta do better. We gotta do better because it, it not only hurts us for us, the lives of our young people are gone. It hurts us even with business, when you're trying to get things here. You have to deal with the, the crime issue. You have to deal with that. And West Memphis, we too small. I don't care. It's not a south side, west, north side, east side, west side. We, we all want West Memphis. And I hope our young men can get, I, I hope this can start coming from the people of West Memphis, and just start speaking unity and being together, you know, to make things happen. So I just ask everyone that's out here and everyone that's in this building, just keep praying for our young men and to make better decisions, and because it, it hurts us all the way around, and we just need to have to do better. We had no citizen requests? Anyone else having anything?
I have one question, Mayor McClendon. It's okay. Um, and I guess I'll direct this to Council Katz, the budget committee. Have there been any discussions about whether or not the employees will get Christmas bonuses this year? Have we talked about that any?
About what?
Christmas bonuses for the employees?
Um, no, I have, but I'm gonna be honest with you, and I know I sometimes get the blackout on this. I'm gonna come back and ask you all for a raise, but I'm, I'm not asking for a Christmas bonus at this point.
Okay. I just wanted to ask before we left because, you know, of course, this time of year, they start asking.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please, pardon, please.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Anyone else having anything they wanna bring forward?
I was curious on the roof inspections. Uh, I think it'd be more effective and definitely a lot safer if we get drones, let them use that. Uh, may need to send someone from police or fire to, you know, operate it for a little while. But I think they could do a quicker and a safer job if we could get that drone to them.
Drone assistance.
I think that's a great idea.
I mean, we, we think about that.
All right. Anyone, Ms. Patricia?
Just want to remind everybody to stop the caring for just, uh, letting you do your question, and we're going to prepare for next year by the annual statements. We've been asked by Moncais office to get them in. You no longer scratch through them. You have to answer the question quietly, depending on when. So we're gonna be getting them to you, and they need to be returned before deadline.
Which is the deadline December third or Thursday?
You gonna send out a fillable PDF or you just gonna send out and do it by hand?
We can do it by hand.
Okay. I've always done mine in PDF, but.
Kind of docked on a couple of them, but then.